Welcome. Wow. We have a big group. This is so exciting. I'm Sherri Lee, Bloodworth-Bottrop. I'm the new Director of Community and Economic Development for the city. Welcome to the very first Town Hall meeting. We'll have a series of these every other week, and I just wanted to let you know what the format would be this evening. So, we're gonna start by letting the mayor, giving the mayor the floor, to talk a little bit about her first 90 days in office, and then talk a little bit about the vision for the future. Then, we'd really like to spend the majority of the time hearing questions from you. Clearly, we're not gonna get to everyone today, but we have received some on email, and after this meeting, you can also email us at fairhope--sorry, townhall@fairhopeal.gov. So if your questions aren't answered today, you can email us, and we're gonna start working to answer those questions on social media and on our website. So, I think we'll just go ahead and kick it off, and let the mayor start talking about the vision, and go from there. And, oh, we'd like to limit comments when you do get up to three minutes, so if you can just keep that in mind, that would be great.
Thank y'all so much for coming. It's so important for us to meet on a regular basis, and I want to invite everybody to come-- Can you hear me? I'll go really, really close to the-- Can you hear me? Okay. It's gonna be very important for us to have these meetings on a regular basis, and I also want to invite you to come and see me in the office if it's just something you want to talk about one-on-one. We are gonna start dedicating at least half a day-- I promise you, I'm working very, very hard every day-- but I do wanna hear from you. And we set this email up, more importantly, just so we can address questions, especially ones that are coming in, and they're about the same topic, like stormwater runoff and things like that. So, we are gonna have that layer of communication in place, in addition to having these every other week, in different locations and different times, so, you know, everybody can participate. What I wanted to talk-- and I'm not gonna talk in great detail about the first 90 days, but it has been interesting. But, what I said, I didn't-- you know, especially business for self, and I'm sure many can, you know, appreciate this-- when you're very busy every day, it's easy to take your eye off the goal. And, I'm going to always have the five important things that you voted me in for always in mind with every decision that I make. The number-one concern is the way we grow. And so, that is taking most of our time. We have a new planning director. This is Wayne Dyes, 23-years experience in planning. I mean, I can't tell you how confident I am that we're gonna put things in place that are fair, consistent, and in line with what you want and how our city grows. Of course, hired Sherri Lee, but we have so much opportunity right now with Fair Hope, and we have so many great employees, but we really don't spend a lot of time identifying how we can generate income over and above things we don't wanna do, like property taxes and things like that. I mean, we have lots of assets, lots of things that we want to put into place that reduces what you're paying as a taxpayer. And we're in a unique area where we have tons of assets, tons of potential, because people want to visit, they want accommodations. You know, these are things that, when you bring these things in, it's just adding, you know, that to the budget, things that will bring us all better quality of life, better education, you know, enhancing our other assets. The things that, you know, smart and responsible growth, number one. But connecting citizens to government, the reason I feel like that's one of the most important things is because, I can tell you, in 2008, and I'm not sure how many people have been here, you know, pre-2008, citizens knew what was going on. And when I started coming into the community and talking to people, I mean, that's when I started realizing that we have not really been keeping up, for whatever reason. I think, you know, newspapers, you know, that's not-- I'm not saying anything about the newspapers, I'm just saying that, you know, it's not the biggest source of how we get our news anymore, and a lot of things aren't talked about. So, bringing citizens to government and keeping you engaged with not only what we're doing, but us listening to you and what you want from this community, it has to stay intact. And we're putting communication ways, easy ways, that you could communicate with us. Financial accountability, that's a lot of what I've been spending my time with. The budget that was presented to us in a budget book is not a format that is transparent. If it's not transparent to me, and I look at these types of things every day, it's certainly not gonna be transparent to you. We have to report financials in a way that brings accountability, and it shows us where we need to work. Utilities are such an amazing asset for this city, and I want people to understand that it's gonna continue giving to the city in ways that really make our town so rich. We live in a town of 18,000, but understand, that's just inside the city limits. We have over 30,000 people that live in 36532, Fair Hope. It's that 18,000 that is helping operate almost exclusively a $60 million budget. There's just not that many towns with that small of a population that operate a $60 million budget. We have a lot to protect, and we also-- there's a lot of room for error, and I'm gonna-- I'll talk more about that. But each one of these things I'm talking about right now will be individual Town Hall meetings for the future. Clear, consistent communication, and protect our valuable assets. This is not just with all the assets we have, and our buildings, parks, and all of these things. It's this library, you know. It's also our non-renewable resources. And we-- this is all gonna be built in how we grow. We want to enhance those things, protect them, and just make it really, really good for all the citizens. So, anyway, that's just a little snapshot of what we've been working on the last 90 days. The budget will be presented within the next couple of weeks with City Council. It'll be probably a special meeting, 'cause it will take a lot of time to go over. You will be-- it'll be advertised, and we welcome you to come to the table. One of the things I'm gonna go ahead and forewarn everybody about is, we have the city, and it is-- it has kind of its own financials, and then we have our utilities. It's two different types of accounting. And, you know, government accounting is a little bit different than, like a for-profit. The for-profit is what I'm used to, and I'm learning the government. But, we have been operating the city for a very, very long time, using our utilities to pay for operating expenses for the city, which is totally fine. But, it's been-- for example, 2017 budget had $6.4 million of the city's operation expense in the utilities. And that-- what we-- we have to show it so that these-- whenever the city needs money, it's a transfer. Because if you're not reporting it that way, how do we put together a budget for gas, water and sewer? You know, all of these things, because you're not showing a true P&amp;L. Does that make sense? I mean, again, another Town Hall meeting, but I'm just trying to tell you, that has been the time-consuming part of putting together the budget. The budget before-- and y'all have the budget book, and y'all can attest-- but was a column for Budget 2016 and a column for Budget 2017, again, without financials for each department. Where are the actuals? You know, what-- where was the, you know, 2016 actual-- well, you can't budget without that information. So, again, I can tell you right now, the Finance Department, Jill Cabiness-- I have no idea if she's here, she's amazing-- spent a lot of time redoing all of this, 'cause it is like redoing 15 businesses. It's-- but it's been great, and let me tell you, it-- there is so much opportunity on every level, I know. Fair Hope is great, but it is going to be so much better financially very soon. And it won't be because of me, it'll just be because we are gonna come together and know how each department can do better. It's really, really exciting. So, we're gonna go through this quickly, 'cause, again, I want to spend this time really answering your questions and, you know, knowing what your biggest concerns are right now. So, I told you we're gonna do the bi-weekly-- what that says and what this says are two different things, so I'll be looking at this a lot. The Community Design Center, the connecting citizens to government-- if we've already established that the way that we grow is the biggest concern, then this Community Design Center is an added step to growth. If a developer or anyone wants to build in Fair Hope-- and if you wanna build a house, we're gonna have a place where you can come and talk to our experts. So, before there's an application process, we're part of this, helping you. You know, we have-- and every city has regulations that, if you're not familiar with it, you're gonna waste a lot of money putting in an application, paying for an engineer, and all these other things, if you don't know what Fair Hope's about and what we are gonna make you do. So, the design studio is going to be-- it's a way for us to communicate, make the developer's project better, and even better suited for the city, and it's gonna identify ways that we can partner, and the city bring something to the table that makes the project even better. So, this level of communication before the project starts is going to resolve so many things. We want the application, by the time it gets to planning, there not-- not be so many problems, so much contention. Planning-- I mean, the Planning Commission meetings, they're so fun. They really are gonna be fun in the future, because we don't want it to be-- those things have been resolved by the time they've gotten to Planning Commission. So, I think that's gonna be one of the most exciting things we put in place. Fair Hope is a town that started with entrepreneurs. From authors, artists that we already know about-- Fair Hope was founded on a book-- to, you know, everybody was an entrepreneur back in the day. I mean, it's, you know-- that is the history and the culture that already exists. I think that we could all agree that Fair Hope has very unique businesses. They don't have to necessarily have a storefront, but we have people here that have retired, and these are not people you can think of as a retired, you know, older person. These are young retirees that have moved to Fair Hope, because this is where they wanna live. They still work from their home, they may want to just help in the community. Score, which is connected with the chambers, one of the most successful scores in the country. We have that already here. If we can grow and build upon what we already have with entrepreneurs, we're gonna build a community that will always remain like no other. It's the towns that allow the developers in, that are just constantly knocking on their door, that are like every other town, that changes things. We already know what we have here. Everybody likes Fair Hope for a different reason, and I've, you know, consistently said, nobody's stuck here. I did find one person that was stuck here, but, I mean, she doesn't count. But, if-- we have to know why Fair Hope is special, and there's lots and lots of reasons, but I promise you, if you have a visitor coming in from out of town, where are you gonna take them?
Not to the airport.
But, I mean, you could-- you might take them to the bay, of course, we can't. That's one of our wonderful resources. And you're gonna take them to places they're not gonna see everywhere else. We have to protect that. That's how we wanna grow. To protect it, you not only encourage entrepreneurs, build that infrastructure to attract them, fiber optics, making the city a smart city. We have unbelievable medical, you know, doctors, attorney-- I mean, when you think of entrepreneur, you might not think about, you know, the things like a storefront, but there's lots of entrepreneurs in Fair Hope-- builders, architects, and we just-- that's what we have. So, if you're gonna protect that, then you have to have a vision and a plan that is truly community-engaged in every neighborhood, so that we're inviting what we want here. We're beating them to the punch, because we don't have a problem with growth. We're the number-one fastest-growing city in the state of Alabama. The problem we have is, we wanna bring in what we want, because everybody wants-- you know, in every industry, wants to come here. So, that's just-- I feel like we can be selective. We want things that are going to, you know, increase your quality of life, your property values, bring more income to our schools. I mean, we do have that choice, because we have built something very special here in Fair Hope. It happened long before me, and we're gonna-- we're gonna keep it that way. So-- Yes, we do. Sherri Lee just whispered, "We need to move." Okay. I was just gonna say one more thing about supporting entrepreneurs. Even if you might not think, "Oh, I'm not gonna shop here or there," when you have a community that truly is supporting each other, and everything is benefiting, then we educate the schools. You know what? We're gonna support the schools more. Schools more. They have to understand how we do that. It's the small businesses that are supporting that. It's local government. We all have to work together to support each other, and it brings in so much more income than anything else, because it's recirculated over and over and over. Again, another Town Hall, more detailed.
You speak of avoiding diversity.
Of what?
Diversity.
I have not gotten to everything. I have not started. I mean, gosh. I think local-- that's successful. We have a lot-- I mean, I've learned every day how much we have in the city that-- I mean, that I don't-- haven't realized, and I've born and raised here. We want to make sure that every citizen in Fair Hope and visitors know about every asset that we have. We're going to put in wayfinding signs, so everybody knows when they-- when they're here, what's going on. A website that is so comprehensive, that if it's happening in Fair Hope, it's gonna be on the website. And we want to support everything. It's not just gonna be a government website. An app, you know, that will show, you know, what's going on and the things that you can do in town. The comprehensive vision is not from me, it's from you. So, what every neighborhood agrees upon-- and these are neighborhoods outside the city as well-- that's how it's going to be zoned, if they want it to. But, there is not a city-- I know in Alabama, who knows anywhere else-- that looks like Fair Hope inside the city limits, but has three-quarters-- one-third-- three-- I'd say three-quarters of the geography that is unzoned, that's outside the city limits. We're gonna have some visuals, we're putting together presentations. It's such a huge threat, you know, and we all have a stake in this. I mean, even the people that may say, "I don't wanna be in the city," it is a risk for them too, because I think the conversation now is, "I wanna be able to do what I want with my property." The conversation now is, "I'm more interested to know what my neighbor's doing." And that is where we have to engage and start planning. It's the most important part, I think. Well, that-- this is gonna be Sherri Lee's job, but we're gonna run through-- I kinda talked about some of that, utility management. The part-- well, this is-- we put this kind of under communication, but when we think of-- I mentioned tourism. It's not tourism the way y'all think, because, believe me, I want Fair Hope just the way, you know. Tourism is gonna be a way that we can-- we have to use this as an income stream, so our citizens are not-- continue to be taxed more every year. We already have tourism. We don't spend a dollar on it. It's word of mouth, we're in every magazine, we're known, you know. We want it to be-- take our culture, our history, the things that we already do, enhance that, and be able to capitalize on that, that we're not-- we're not doing right now. If somebody comes to Fair Hope, where do they stay? We do a lot of events, a lot of community events. We do so much in Fair Hope to have them stay outside of Fair Hope and lose that on those sales tax dollars or lodging taxes and things like that. I mean, that's just-- that's a lost opportunity. So, when we talk about tourism, we already have that. The tourism that we're gonna put in place are ways that will pay for the things that we individually don't wanna pay for. So, the Emergency-- Emergency Management Office is a big thing, but it's-- we're putting in the studies for the-- part of the funding that we have access to, and it's blessed it's a one-time opportunity, is the Restore Act funds. We were able to really come together, city employees, you know, everybody, 'cause we had a lot in the portal that we wanted to support, but we put something together, a plan, in a more comprehensive way, that is gonna study stormwater runoff and things in a more regional way, because we can no longer plan development based on this little area where the development is happening. It has to be looked at in a regional way, tying in all of our waterways, watersheds, and things like that. So, the Restore Act funds-- two things that are in there are the comprehensive land use for stormwater, and then a comprehensive plan for a bayfront enhancement. So, taking the assets we already have around the bay, and, you know, putting in that infrastructure and things that we need to do. But, all of that is gonna be a gift for the community, because we could've said, "We need a new sewer treatment plant." And we're like, "Don't get me wrong, we do need that, but I want this to be looked at as we see this and we say, 'We were able to do this because of funds we would've never had otherwise.'" It's like a gift. You don't wanna buy something for someone that they can buy themselves. And we are gonna always have that infrastructure in place. You wanna buy something that they wouldn't have bought otherwise, and that's what we want to look at Restore Act funds for. Okay? Okay. What we're gonna do now-- and there's just so much to all of this-- and I've just touched briefly on a little bit of it, but I want to start talking about the things that you're concerned about. You had mentioned over there, yelled, "diversity." One of the things that everything that we're doing is about is inclusive. We want opportunity for all. That's actually one of the reasons, you know, Fair Hope was founded. It was to bring opportunity for all. That's why single tax exists. It might not be the same reasons why it exists today, but that's what we were founded on. So, we're going back to our roots. We want opportunity for everyone. It doesn't matter your background, your income. We're Fair Hope. It's one of the nicest places ever, not because of the place, but because of the people. So, we're-- as far as diversity, just know, there's opportunity for everyone, and we wanna make sure that that continues. So, what we can do now-- I mean, we have some that have been emailed, and some that have been written down on a card, but I'd like to just hear from everybody that's here until we run out of time, and address some of these other ones if we don't have time. So, if-- you can either come up here, or if you yell, you can do it from where you are.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor?
I mean, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Adam.
Would it be appropriate-- can you hear me?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate at this time, because of the issue of diversity that was brought up, for Sherri Lynn-- Sherri Lee--
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Sherri Lee.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. Sherri Lee to speak to the meeting that she has been involved--
It's a big thing, but hopefully we can--
Okay.
Yeah, but I agree. This is--
That's all I have to say.
It's huge, and you've been a part of that. I'd like for you to-- this is about diversity and inclusion.
I'm so glad you brought that up, because when I heard that, I thought, how blessed I feel to be in this room this evening, and started out my morning in a room that was incredibly diverse. And Wayne was there with me, and that was in the Twin Beach community, talking about some very specific challenges and long-term challenges that community has had.
And you're gone.
And I'm out. I'm back. And so, I want to-- I mean, I wanna address the-- I mean, I think diversity was yelled out maybe for that reason, but to say that--
Get close to your microphone, maybe.
Too close?
I don't know. Can y'all hear?
Can y'all hear me?
I can--
Before?
You wanna give or you're--
How about now?
Okay.
So, many people in the community have rallied together. I see some other people here that were at the meeting this morning, but I've been here for about a month, and one of the first things that hit my radar was that there was this community that I knew about when I lived in Fair Hope before, which was about six years ago. I lived here for about six years, that had some specific challenges, a lot of infrastructure, flooding issues, things they had asked for help with in the past, and just felt like they weren't able to access the resources that they needed. And so, many members of the community have rallied around with this community. There are a lot of complicated questions and things that are related to planning and zoning, and, you know, air property rights, and all sorts of things to deal with there. But, the point is that we're engaging in these conversations, and we are taking the difficult questions and trying to figure out how to serve all of our community, not just some of our community. So, we're at the table, and we're at the table for all communities in Fair Hope, not just one community. We're all one community, and I don't know, Wayne, if you wanted to add anything to that, but--
I think you did a good job, Sherri Lee. Thank you. But, I think Sherri-- But I think Sherri Lee is right. I mean, we're here for the whole community, excluding no one, and so, uh, this morning was very interesting. We heard a lot of concerns and some things that we can go back and, and work on and try to solve some of their, some of their challenges, and so it was, uh, an opening, an experience for me, and, uh, and I look forward to trying to solve those challenges in the community.
So, does, does anyone want to come up to the microphone, or, okay?
My name is Dan Smith. I live at 217 South Mountain Street. I've been here almost my life. Uh, my- my question is, Mayor, what can we do as citizens to help you and the council work together?
I do, I do want to, is this on? What I want to say is that-
The thing-
The thing that y'all, if you'll see, I'd say, is 1% of what we do every day, you know, because remember, I'm working 24/7 doing this. 98% of it is about the future and things that you've already communicated to me that is important to you. I want you to know that I'm not gonna be maybe the person that sits on the fence a lot, let's just say. I, I've heard you. I am not afraid to fight for it, and that's what I'm here to do. And it is a fight. Don't, don't, you know, think that this is something that everybody wants about smart growth, protecting our assets, doing all these things that we just talked about. I promise you, there is going to be a group that's gonna be fighting night and day to not change those things. I am going to fight for it. We are gonna get along. We get along great. Jimmy! But, well, but to assure you something, because I do want to be proactive in making relationships better, uh, all the city employees are amazing. We're having a team retreat in March, and it was one of those things, should we start with council, should we start with city employees? Understand that the city employees, it's 24/7 for us. We're working every single day, so it's important for us, first and foremost, to build a team that we're on the same page, and every day we're coming to work knowing that we have a goal to accomplish together. Then we're gonna do it with council, but if there's only one person doing it, so I had to like, you know, start this first, then we're doing it in March. We all want good things. That's why city council and I stepped up to serve. And we are going to do those things in a way that I know things will always get better. I have had to really, I can't change the words fight, I'm trying to be, you know, optimistic, but to have change when everything has been a certain way for a very long time, and you're working at government that, let's just say, is 10 times slower than normal life, I'm gonna have a sense of urgency, and I'm gonna stand my ground, but I promise you, I'm doing it for you and for what- That will have nothing to do with me. It is a process that happens when you bring transparency.
I'm gonna give, oh, we have another question. I was gonna give the councilman a question to read.
Karen, is there something in that plan that addressed the Fairhope school feeder pattern and how the city communication, board of education, and where are all of our schools? Because I, for me, first of course, that is a- I touched on, is this on? Can you hear me? I touched on in respect to-
I just gotta tell you, I don't know why I picture-
What I did touch on is that we are, when I said, "There isn't another town that looks like Fairhope," and this will be another town home meeting, because I'm presenting it in a way, what this is about as a town, as a, is the same problem with our schools. The city of Fairhope, and including Montrose and Point Clear, there's just a sliver that's inside the city limits. And if that sliver, and if everybody in here are voters, it's you, that are paying for the majority of everything, to run this city and for all of our services, which include fire, police, schools. These are Baldwin County schools, but no, the city of Fairhope has all ways and will continue to do way more as a city for our schools. I want that money to continue, but I want it to go to something that makes our schools better, not props them up to be equal. It will be addressed, it's the absolute first item that we're going next week to address in legislation. We have, we are, we've been at a tipping point, we've tipped. We service more students outside the city in our feeder pattern than we do inside the city. This is not about separate schools. This is not about making any decisions. It's about stating the facts and figuring out how we're gonna fix this. The growth that Fairhope has is not inside the city limits. Yes, we are growing. It's outside the city limits. So, if it's, we've already tipped, and every year that's getting worse and worse, what have we got to do about it? It is a problem. It has to be talked about. We have to have more funding, and we're gonna get it. I mean, that's what we're doing.
Hi, I'm Laffey Cannon. Um, I'm wondering, you know, with all this growth that, of course, is gonna happen, we want it to happen, and why I voted for you, is the little people, you know, gentrification, um, you know, these big giant houses going up, how are you gonna take care of us, the little people?
Well, I am in the same boat. My grandmother, right here, Granny, you wanna sit?
Oh, is she here?
Many trouble. She built this, uh, little ranch house, 205 here. I lived there for 20 years, and she built it in 1950, and it is, it's 2,000 square feet. I would've lived there for the rest of my life, except now I live by the Patriot Palate. That's the only place I would've moved otherwise. But, believe me, my neighborhood is, that's my neighborhood. We can't, it, it has to be addressed, but no, we can't make that process so we tell somebody what they can do with their property. But what we are gonna do is bring vision that brings better value to property and options as part of our design studio, to let people know that we want things that fit in with our community, that not only it's, it's something that you want for your property, but what's best for the neighborhood. And this can't be a strong-arm thing with a bunch of regulations and things like that. It has to be a conversation. And, and that's, to me, how we're going to address those things. You know, this is another town hall meeting, and there's gonna be lots of questions, but we talk about affordable housing, and we talk about these things that aren't big issues. I mean, there's not that many people that can afford some of the neighborhoods in our area. But, to me, there's not, there shouldn't be a problem having an accessory home that might benefit your, you know, your mother, or, you know, your grandmother, or your, your college kid coming home, or you just being able to supplement your income for a little bit of rent. I mean, you're vetting that person. It's your neighbor, you know? We have to bring that type of diversity into our neighborhoods, not only to help the people who own property, but to give affordable housing to people who can't afford it in Fairhope. So, those are the conversations we want to have. Those things are not available right now. They're, it's not allowed. So, I think that's gonna address some of those problems, too.
Is it true that Fairhope does not allow small houses like, you know, Katrina houses? Fairhope requires a certain, um, square feet? Is that true?
Well, I mean, there's different neighborhoods, you know, planned, uh, developments, I mean, they require that. Fairhope is not, in other words, we don't want you, people to build something that's gonna devalue a neighborhood. And I'm saying that would, but that could be part of another house. And again, these are not gonna be by decisions. We're coming out, we're talking to you, stating all the facts, and we want you to be part of the process, the way that we move forward with our, with our regulations. But accessory homes and mixed use, that is the way smart cities are growing. It has to be encouraged for the diversity and being able to support all income levels. So, any other questions?
I'm, I'm, quite a major concern is the environment. Every year, billions of gallons of raw sewage gets dumped into our bay, and I'm wondering when that ever is, is ever gonna get fixed.
The-
And I think it should be-
Are you saying raw sewage, or, I mean, the treated? I mean, yes, we do have overflow, but that is usually the treated.
They just dumped raw sewage last week. Daphne, it, it doesn't-
That's happening.
There's millions.
I mean, we want it to be, we gotta address it.
I would not ever do anything on a bay.
Right. I mean, is this, I'm not familiar with the Daphne, what happened there, but-
Dump raw sewage every time everybody is-
Right. I mean, there, there's no question, what, the problem we're having right now, which is part of our study, is we have enhanced and upgraded a big portion of our sewer. It is the lift stations and things like that that have to be updated now. That's part of the problem, because if it's not pumping correctly, then, you know, some of this is overflowing in the-
Just a $10 million overhaul, whatever. A few years ago, they just did a $10, $11 million-
Not, not the lift stations. This is just the lift stations that are, I don't know how many we have, I'm not sure if it ends here, but that's what we're doing now. The other part wasn't done. That's the part that has been left off, left alone. All that other stuff has been done. So that, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're doing now. That's part of this moratorium that I was, you know, a big advocate of, not for any other reason, but to have time to update our regulations, you know, putting, putting in the things that are important to you, and addressing stormwater, and I, actually, I do think that Wayne can speak better for this.
Just to answer the question about Daphne, it's my, I'm, it's my concern that Daphne had a lift station problem. Their generator went out at the lift station, and when the lift station's not working, the, the sewer's not being pumped to, to the, to the plant. And I think part of the moratorium we're looking at, it is Fairhope's lift stations and their capacity and their ability to operate, and so that's part of what we're looking at as far as the moratorium. But I think the Daphne issue was just that, a, a lift station issue where the, the pump stopped failure.
It happens every time there are rains.
Right.
Tell all the communities, it's not just Daphne.
And, and, and the rain, the infiltration of the rainwater sometimes causes-
They don't have a separate system for the rainwater is the problem. To, you know, the rainwater should be going into the bay on its own accord, not going through the, uh, the sewer system.
What we can do, because I mean, the, he's what, the town hall meetings, this is about the last one. We have another meeting, it's gonna be awesome. But I want to address that in more detail and bring the people that understand all the details of that department to the table, so we can answer your questions. But the most important part of this moratorium, there's lots of reasons, that we're using this time to identify what is left in our sewer department that needs to be updated, not only to update it, but to know and understand the cost, because right now, we're not charging for it, for development. There's no sheer cost of this. I mean, we have to have that, because we're giving away everything for free. So, it's not just a study about infrastructure upgrades, which we are gonna do, it's about, how do you pay for it? So, so you won't be taxed more for it, for outside development, so.
I don't mind paying tax for a better community.
But you're paying tax for-
For somebody else.
Somebody else! You know, I mean, that, it has to be sure, by the way, you are contributing, but the sales tax, that, not sales tax, the city property taxes that the voters are paying for right now cannot afford it. And you're paying the maximum amount of city property taxes that is legal at the state development law. So not only can we not afford it, even if I had choice, which I wouldn't do anyway, that can't be addressed. So that shortfall has to come from somewhere, and it's the developers.
My name is John Schurkoff. I worked here for over 10 years, I'm a lover of this community.
Can't hear you. He, he moved here and he fell in love with this community, when?
Ten years ago.
There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. We came down in '05 to visit our daughter and son-in-law who moved here, came downtown, walked around downtown, fell in love with the community and the people in the area. Our concerns are this. A safety issue downtown has not been addressed. There are no walk lights. You have to walk on a green light, and the cars turn right, and they can run you over. That, that has to be, that has to be attended to. The other thing that is concerned to us is our resources. We need to address the resources of water, sewage, and electricity. The more we allow building in this community, the more we're using those resources, and we're gonna overflow them. It's not gonna work.
So, it's safety concerns and utility needs. Fairhope is blessed to own all of our utilities. We were the first city in the state of Alabama that-
Exactly.
But that, uh, there's 36 municipalities in the state that have that, so you can see there's not that many cities. We are blessed to have it. We have to make sure that every year, we are putting things in the capital fund for each utility to make sure we're maintaining them, not waiting until we have a substation that turns 50 years old and say, "We're gonna build a new substation." I mean, it has to be maintained and ready, and that's what we want, we get to.
But can't we do something about all of the building that I see going on here? Daphne is doing the same problem, having the same problem. There are too much building going on.
I mean, our problem, like I said, this is one of the main reasons why I stepped up and wanted to do this, because I care deeply about having the same opportunities that I had when I came back to Fairhope for my kids. I have an 18-year-old and a 20-year-old. We all want to move away from our hometown. It's the number-one goal. We're graduating. It's their number-one goal, what, you know, but we want the town that you fell in love with, that brought you here, to be that same town down, down the road. The utilities, that's what we're doing right now in this moratorium. Out of the four utilities, we have a- Out of the four utilities, we have a study now on electric. It was done in...we have $10 million of infrastructure that we need to do, which means we haven't done anything. We can brag about paying down debt, but if you're not paying for infrastructures, you can't brag. I mean, you know, you have to maintain those things. The studies we're doing now are for the water, sewer, and gas, so we're doing that. That's what we're, we're addressing right now, so we know what needs to be done, what is the cost, so we can...we put a plan in place, not just for this year, but long-term, how to pay for those things. Because the study is going to use the growth we've been having recently, which has been enormous. But not all of our utilities are used by all the services, like gas. We have gas lines to Baymanett, but electric is just within our city limits. So, we, it has, I mean, that, that's where our, our service area is. And those infrastructure needs, we, we know, we have to do them, but there's not like a whole lot of growth potential, so, you know? Sewer and water, that's not a profit center, it's a service, but we do have to grow according to the growth that we have right now, and it's, it's huge. So, that's, that is absolutely what we're working on right now. We want to know what we have to do, the cost, and a short-term and long-term plan to get to that point. And as far as safety, downtown, we want, with your help, to...we have to fix parking. Parking is a danger right now. I, I'll back out, you know, of, of my building, and if I have an SUV, which is 98% of the time, I can't see, to back out. It's a danger, pedestrian, even though I do think we have great things, you know, pedestrian-friendly things in place, it is dangerous.
Can't we just, can't we just go ahead and put walk lights in on the traffic lights of the bay?
Right. We, we are, and I wish that, but we have that first. The next one we have is, I think, on Reno, because it is a big traffic. Um, and, and yeah, we, we have to put in things that are pedestrian-friendly, so we can keep safe. No question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't...I'm not sure who, who did first, but... Okay.
Paul Rehm, there's two, two issues that are pressing the city the most, that involve millions and millions of dollars. One of them is airports, and that debt is 21% of our entire debt. And we're getting pushback from council. Council wants the airport authority to maintain the land, and we as taxpayers to pay it for it. I wouldn't buy a car without a tire or a house without a tire. But that's the situation that we're in. There are many, many other issues with the authority, but that land needs to come back in the hands of the taxpayers and the city.
Well... The airport authority was something that, and I'll let you continue, but I addressed very early on. Out of all the assets that we have, I wanted to take on first and foremost what represented the biggest expense. And that, I, I'm the one that kind of put it out there, "Look, these are the facts. It makes up 21% of our debt." That's never been talked about. I mean, that's just something that I had to bring citizens in on, because it is you that's going to help accomplish what we need to accomplish. You have to know the facts. It makes up 21% of our debt. There hasn't been a plan for 10 years. There still is no plan. The covenant that states that the land can go back to the city if the principal is not paid will still be intact when we refinance. I absolutely want to refinance this debt. This is not about, this whole thing that's happened this last three months has, has never been about me holding things up for a refi. The facts are, early September, I engaged the airport authority. I said, "What's up with the fact that this amazing debt, we've been 100% responsible for, and how long are we going to be on the hook for it?" Well, there was a lot of miscommunication, misinformation given, the more I dug into it, the more identified. We need more accountability out there, and we will put ourselves in a better position, because, look, we have an, you know, economic development person on board, too, that will work now with the airport in Baldwin County. We're going to put something in place that is best for the city. It has to pay off, and we have to take care of this debt with a sense of urgency. We have been paying the airport more than we have appropriated for our five public schools total. That's a problem. And that is what I have brought to the people, because nobody knew about this. So, now, the problem is not about getting the land back. That was something I wanted to do to wake everybody up. The problem now is that we, we know about it, we're watching it, and it's, it's public opinion that counts the most right now, and it will be up to you. I cannot do everything on my own. I'm going to try my hardest. You have to stay engaged, and you have to speak up. If you agree with things that I, that I say, support it, because I'm not going to be able to do it on my own. The airport, we, we, I, I feel confident that we're going to be able to do some good things at the airport. We want the airport, we want the same things that they do. We want it to bring economic development and income for our city. But we also want to make sure that we prioritize our spending, so we're paying for things that you care about the most first, before these other things. So, what, what was your other question?
Well, that point taken as well. The citizens need to understand that Americans only do so much. When we come to pushing back on the council, that's up to us. We don't push back on them, she's taking all the weight, even though we're not getting our message out. That's what's happening right now. The other issue, and this goes back like to '06, is the apartments over at Flag River. From the beginning of the progress project, it has been a problem, it costs millions of dollars, it's spilled up the stream, it's spilling out the basin every year, there's maintenance. The whole last election was based on Scott and O's apartments.
Well, not the whole election.
We have yet to see.
But, yes, I agree. I mean, it was a big, big deal, and it still is a big deal.
And we have yet to see the repeal of 1572, that ordinance...
I want, I want to explain this, but no, me and council, we can't talk about specifics about that, otherwise, we risk putting the city more liability, because we are being sued. There's only certain things we can say, but do know, before I took office, I am the one that identified that the approval for that development, based on the changing of the drainage system, was illegal. And I came to council, I mean, the planning commission, and said, "This has to be turned down, okay?" And it was turned down. After this, we have to let the course of the lawsuit now happen. I said that we need to repeal this, but no, too, this is, no, we all have to come together and listen to our attorney. If we don't do it in a way, we want to do this in a way that is best for the citizens, best for the city, and best for the process. That's how we're going to do it. Nothing can be done without a lot of thought and knowing what is best and how to handle it. That's all I can say about it. But, just like me, and I'm learning this every day, it's a process, and we have to be a little patient. But I, you already know how I feel, and you already know what I've, what I've already done with this, and that's not going to stop.
We're at time. We're at, we're at time.
Yeah, I mean, we're at seven now, but a couple more questions.
Mr. Wilson, George Wilson.
Uncle, I'm so glad you came.
Someplace better. You mentioned you have a community design center.
Hmm?
And we've been focusing on this very well, on future growth, things we're trying to control. There's a number of subdivisions, small subdivisions, such as Fairhope Place, and by the way, I appreciate the communications that we have presented there, that have issues that we have to deal with right now. And these are issues that tie into the city, that tie into probably your favorite subject, erosion. Or is there, is this community design center, is there a place like that, where the HOAs and the individuals from the subdivisions can go?
Yes, and we are going to do a town hall just about stormwater. But, and I'm learning every day, too, what...first of all, the city as a whole, we want to put in the things that have to happen to help the way water flows, using all of our watersheds. We have to do that as a city, and we are going to do it. But then, it's also awareness and education to help everybody understand what is the responsibility of the citizens. But understand, we're going to do our part and do it as a top priority. What I have learned is all communities are having problems right now. It's not...we, we're identifying them, tracking them, saving all the information. We know everybody, including neighborhoods that have never had an issue, but that are now having issues. When addressing these problems, it has to be a collaborative effort with your neighborhood. Do not take on a stormwater issue just thinking about your own property, because if you exasperate a problem for your neighbor, you're responsible for it. So, the stormwater also recognize, we are the rainiest city in the country. They say it's Mobile, I disagree. It's Fairhope. And we also have to know that when it rains, standing water for 48 hours is going to be normal in our area. If it's a hard rain, 72 hours, okay? We're lucky to live in a semi-tropical area, and there's blessings to this, but it is the area that we chose to live, and it's raining. It rains a lot. Our development and regulations are not only going to address this for future growth, but we're going to put things in place every creative way you can think of to help stormwater. It's going to be education and putting these things in place to help it. There's a grass, lots of grasses. There's grass out there that soaks up four times more water than maybe the grass we're using. I mean, we're going to go that far and ask our local wholesaler to grow this grass and recommend it for development. It's going to be in every detail that we do, address the fact that we're the rainiest city in the country, and know that the neighborhoods, too, when they were developed, there's two things that you have to look at, especially if it's an organized subdivision, PUD, or think, you know, something like that. The developer is responsible for a certain number of years, and it's identified in your bylaws, usually. And then, that transfer responsibility happens for different neighborhoods, different times. So, knowing who's responsible is key, and then, understand that retention ponds, whatever was put in place to mitigate this, is the responsibility of the neighborhood. And we want to make sure, as part of the design studio, communication, and everything, that people know what is their responsibility, because if another neighboring neighborhood, for instance, is not taking care of their retention pond, or whatever it is they're supposed to take care of, and it's hurting you, we might want to consider, I don't know if this is legal, so please don't quote me on this, but, you know, if we see that it hasn't been maintained, and the city comes and, and does it, then we levy that to that neighborhood that's not taking responsibility, because we don't want it to affect your neighborhood. You know, we, we have to look at all of these ways that we can protect everybody's neighborhood, but it is going to be, we have to work together to do it, because it's not going to be everything is the city's responsibility. We're responsible for the roads, the right-of-ways, and the drain, the draining system. But outside of that, I mean, we could never be liable for all of that, but we do need to take care of the regional situation, and that's our waterways and our watersheds, and we will be addressing that. Yes?
Following up on his question, have we confirmed that our neighborhood is on this list? Because I've communicated issues with the previous administration and always left with a very negative feeling about any part of being aware or concerned.
Well, what I'd like for you to know is that it doesn't matter what's happened in the past, know that we're putting this in place as a priority. And, again, knowing who is responsible for what, it's not just neigh, you know, the citizens that may not be aware of this. To be honest, there's parts of the city that wasn't aware of that, too. So, we might have fixed things that we shouldn't have and set a precedence, I mean, or, or promised things. We just, like I said, the water and stormwater issue is going to be a longer meeting, because there's a lot of detail to it. I mean, do you have anything to add to that, Wayne, or Sherri Lee?
Mayor, the only I'd say is that as far as the regulations go for stormwater, one of the things we'll be doing is analyzing those to ensure we are, we have the best possible regulations and the best practices to handle stormwater. And that takes a lot of analysis, and you have to look at the storm regulations that fit your city, fit the conditions here. And we are doing that now, and we're going through all the regulations to ensure that they are appropriately addressing the issues that need to be addressed, and also, we are looking at the regulations just from the standpoint of how things go through the approval process, and ensuring that they are following that process. And then also, I anticipate in the future, we may have community engagement early on in a development process, so a developer can get feedback early on, rather than going to the planning commission and have 250 people there. They have a chance in a more informal setting to get feedback, so they might go back and address that as they design their, their, their development, and not, and not have these big blowups of the planning commission. So, I think that's one of the things we're probably looking at, and those, those recommendations will be forthcoming, but we will take, as the mayor mentioned, a comprehensive look at that, and trying to, again, ensure that we can, you know, growth will happen, that's, that's something that we're going to have, that we're going to deal with, and make sure that we manage it the best possible way to maintain Fairhope's character, and, and also to maintain what we have here. If you're not careful, growth can get out of control, and you start losing that charm that we have, and that's something we don't want to see. We want to ensure that we, we grow correctly, smartly, and ensure that we are also keeping up the infrastructure with the growth. That's a very, very important factor. If you look around the country, we can all go to cities, and we can see right away places that have not grown correctly, and we go places that have. Places that do grow correctly, you have a good feeling there, you want to go back there. And that's something that we want to maintain in Fairhope.
Thank you.
I was going to say, maybe we should do some closing comments. I'll, I'll piggyback, because someone mentioned, a couple of people have mentioned the design center or studio, we're calling it two things, and I just want to say, don't go looking for it yet, because it doesn't have a home. It's conceptual at the moment. The city has as many buildings as we have, we actually have a space deficit, I'm finding, but we will have a space for this place, and it will be a hub of convening, a place to discuss these kinds of issues, a place where we'll bring expertise, where the community can engage, can give some design expertise, growth expertise... can engage, um, can give some, uh, design expertise, um, growth expertise. Someone, uh, put something out here earlier about the village concept. That will be a place we can discuss that, um, among many other things, and we'll communicate that to you when we have a space. But just wanted to make sure you knew there wasn't a physical, a physical space yet for it, but it will be coming, and we'll have a, I'm sure we'll have a town hall.
Right now, it's more of part of the process of planning.
That's correct.
And soon it will be a...
Oh.
Maybe to continue in the village concept, we already have access, but there were reports and studies done, surveys done, that said that we would do it a certain way. We look at that every five years. And I believe the mayor's grandmother had actually told me that there was a long process putting that together, but that's the way it was to begin. Maybe that was 15 years ago. But we have to realize right now how many access we have, because all of us together in the next council meeting, we should all go and support each other, because we're the ones that elect the difference.
That's true. And, two things to that point. Um, the, that original comprehensive plan was more like 25 years ago, and what we might have envisioned 25 years ago is different now. And we also want to understand that a vill, what a village is. I mean, is it a strip mall and an apartment complex?
No.
You know? We have to, you can put anything in place as a study, but it needs to be clear what those things are, and that's what we're going to do, too.
First of all, we're about to break up, and I think it's about time to go, because it's after time, and a lot of this is happening. But I would like to say how much I appreciate, this is the first really meeting of this kind we've had in Fairhope in just about 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want me to give a few words, I will, but, um, I just wanted to say, I definitely echo that sentiment. This is a huge turnout. I underestimated the crowd that would be here tonight. I was anticipating sitting out here in the audience with y'all, um, so I wasn't planning on sitting up here at the front, but figured out when I walked in. But, uh, thank you for turning out. That's something I've learned in the first 100 days of, um, being a councilman. We have a tremendous community, a lot of volunteers. I've served on three separate, uh, committees as the liaison, and the amount of talent you have in Fairhope that want to give back and want to help, just with their own free time, is tremendous, and, and I really appreciate everyone that does serve in any capacity. And also, just want to speak a little bit about, um, the council and the mayor. We're, we're all stepping into a new, new uncharted territory. We've got a new mayor for the first time in 16 years. We've got three new councilmen. Um, we're drinking out of a fire hose as far as the learning curve goes. It's a lot to take on. And in this first 50 days, I think we passed the moratorium, uh, we've got a tremendous amount that we're adjusting to and trying to accomplish at the same time. I expected the first six months to be a little bit rocky. I think you'll see things smooth out. I do believe that everyone on there wants what's best for Fairhope. We may differ on our opinions, and I don't always agree with the mayor, but I don't always agree with my fellow councilmen either. Um, and that's what's great about America, that's what's great about Fairhope. We can all have a different opinion, but we can be respectful about how we work through that. And as long as we're all working together, we're going to make a better Fairhope. Just want to share that.
Karen, I have two things I'd like to say. And one is, uh, for me, I really want and really love the fact that you all are agreeing to disagree and arguing and fussing and fighting, because you're all fighting for the same thing, and that is this community. I, for one, do not want you all to get along all the way.
Right.
Even within my own family, we don't get along all the way. But I think that you all want to have the best interest of this community together, and I hope that you'll continue to respect each other's opinions, but also, you know, good politics is all about being respectful.
Right. I, I totally agree with you, and I appreciate that comment.
If you're willing to go back to them. The other thing is, with your stormwaters, Charlie and I, this is Spencetown in Mississippi, they have a state-of-the-art, uh, program where they can predict water flow, and they did it after Katrina. If you and your folks...
Sherry Lee knows about that.
Right, right. If you and your folks would take a trip over there and work with Sherry Lee...
That's where she used to work. And, and David Perks, the urban planner that is helping us, I mean, are you talking about the design studio there? That's, that's who's helping us. Thank you.
So I think we're at time. We're at time. If you have questions that were not answered that come up later, townhall@fairhopeal.gov is the email address.